Let's follow smoothie to order.
Thank you. Let's rise to the swing to the flag. Whenever you're ready, David.
That's right.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Sunshine law of this.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open House and public meetings may be held in person or by means of needed equipment, delivery services and other online meeting platforms.
This meeting is being held in person and through the Zoom meeting via form being broadcast at bicentennial hall twenty five seater avenue area of New Jersey. Public participation for this regular council meeting of June twenty third, twenty twenty five is available by calling phone number or through web conference zoom. Members of the public will be unmuted till it is time for questions or comments, which will be announced. At that time, the public has the opportunity to question or comment by phone or through zoom by the raise hand button and will be called on at the appropriate time.
Notice that this meeting was included in the schedule of meetings, which was adopted by the resolution. No, not much. And then to the upgrade part of the press. And the two river towns on the board in the. In one.
On January seventh.
On January seventh, twenty twenty five on the. For our website, the bulletin for. One municipal building. And has remained continuously posted as required under the statute.
Very well done. With adequate notice. With adequate notice having been given, the Borough Court has directed to include this statement in the minutes of this meeting.
Ms. Allison, there please have your call.
Council members call. Demaselli here. Ollie. Potts.
Here.
La Rivera.
President.
Olson. We have the Minister of York, Attorney Sobel, Lieutenant Schneider, CFO Britain, Engineer Rodana and DP Wubartha for Tinsley.
Uh, thank you. Well, we are starting off with public hearings. Um, and I'm going to get to a uh, an introduction a little bit later as well, but I just want to mention very briefly that um, you know, cheap war better, obviously. This is our mayor for today, the really bad. Uh, we had her in to Borough Hall that she met with all the department heads. And she even got a, a behind the scenes VIP tour. Um, along with her brother of the new police station. What do you think? Is it pretty cool? And she might have gone to jail cell, but we're not going to tell. Um, they were straight off. We, we are going to talk about proposed grant applications, right? And the first one is at uh, fiscal year twenty twenty six month county agreement development block grant. And that's going to be followed by the twenty twenty five moment party park system, the municipal open space rate. And with us is from engineer. Let me start out.
Good evening. So last meeting we came to you, we spoke to workshop about three grants, two of which are Uncle Public's grants. The first is the community development block. That's a significant amount of counting aside money. They've made this uh. ADA type improvement, spoken word, dirty silver, who just finished the earth. And what he's bad ones and the uh. The grant on that. So this year we are able to submit for oral hall improvements to the back notes. From an ADA standpoint, can also submit ADA improvements. We ended around outside facility. At entry and some of the ramps, maybe one of something part of anything that. The grant uh, amount is up to two hundred thousand. So as we had mentioned, I think we are being will be submitted for that all now. We did have a kickoff meeting with the staff at Mon County. Uh, Roger, the criteria, mostly to that's obviously doing those things you don't check. Or look for submission. So it's a purpose really to stay. It's a public hearing. It's a chance for the public to weigh in and ask questions about projects. We don't have any um, design plans at this point in time because it's the existing back of there. I mean, we're doing an improvement that would stand for the ADA. The cost estimate that will be generated that will be within the application will be at the amount of. So obviously submitted full amount of in anticipation, getting almost that over. Our team is in third way is not less than um. We're considering this should have some of the staff we need to get together for narratives and all the requirements. So like I said, that's nice purpose. It's somewhat of a brief open discussion about project, if you're going to answer any questions. And kind of walk through.
Yeah, just uh, I think I just want to add the record and the last meeting. Uh, but we did have the conference with uh, Mon County Guard Development. Did check see if there were any other locations that would have been eligible here in Fairhaven. Uh, are inside of rural hall. Uh, because we've done all ADA upgrades to buildings. And if there are no other ADA upgrades that fits the requirements with granting of Fairhaven. For all as shared, you decided through the Palatary and the complex is only helpful site for this ramp. Uh, that's why we are choosing for all. Uh, also important note too, um. Let's be proud of it, but uh, our bad, although it's called like sixty three, these are the original two bad those activities except to put a paint and put on it earlier.
They, they look it.
But uh, they are, um, you have to get it to share your building. Not into the change.
Sixty three years.
To buildings in those back. There we are.
And just for my knowledge concession stands, was that what that?
Uh, concession stand was not enough.
Not enough.
Not enough.
It has to be shared.
Doesn't have, it doesn't have to be shared, uh, but because that building has uh, it has a couple of access that's not, it's not a strictly building concession stand. Um, does have restricted access to it. Um, what allows it to be required or uh, or eligible for the.
So there's no other, there's no other use for this grant in the borough area is what I'm hearing.
Right.
And we're, we're targeting two hundred thousand dollars of free improvements to Borough.
Correct. If before it gets to the bank again.
But I don't think there's much more to talk about from where I'm at. Is there any other meeting?
Um, you're going to be doing some upgrades. Steve Rich can touch on that as well. Some upgrades to some agents as well. So for example, here at um. The possibility of all the G development block grant, we uh, put a new ADA grant as well on the submission driven uh, with the ADA bathroom as well. Uh, so this grant will be open to public, our ADA and.
Maybe.
I'm not sure. Um, that was great.
Will, will, will there be improvements of ADA access like on the side there or corridor or any events? Uh, it looks like it.
So there's resistance they live in means standard that's not later. The, the main so far as the part of that is like coming along to little accessory work. So on outside, door serving out very little. Uh, when you really fall to the overs.
Yeah.
Change at the backside?
Yeah.
Accessible around the, the, the excess space, excessive space. We're a little.
Awesome. Do we need a vote of any term on this?
We, yeah, just that.
All in favor, take a look. And then ready to question for actual motion, time motion.
Motion to approve.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, the next, the next one up.
Stick Marty, man.
Well, it's not listed on here, I'll say.
It says.
It has a comment on this. Specifically for. Is anyone on two?
Yeah, everybody has their head.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Can we move on to twenty twenty five moment party park system initial open space grant? I'm assuming this is the same type, Allison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, so. About my daughter. It is, of course, these uh, I think they only go for two different levels. So the most. They program. We are looking to submit an application for demand forms for the. So since our last meeting, we had a workshop. We obviously had a series of open houses. We had internal meetings, some of ours, we took success and. Other votes. And as a part of the grant. This is a very early stage concept plan. It captures a lot of what we talked about at these meetings and some of them. Isn't it stuff I've been doing. And we also then assembled a list of pay items with associated with that. So what I do was derive a workflow. Uh, and, and those of you who've obviously known the site, um, it's at a very road. It's adjacent to our city. So it's also adjacent to the. It is one of the properties, but it is saying, saying that. And it's pretty much that their own sense. We have since rewire that property. For all. And then we want to translate leaving to see resolution for the operation bid for these demolition and stabilization portion. Of this project, which was part of the things we just fully acquisition. This is obviously now second phase as to the latest technical improvements. So once again, ten thousand K booking down the property. One of the main focuses is beach state representation. Still, we have a show on there. We're just. We're looking at a combination of the two, whether it's a whole head, living shoreline. And then obviously we have this beach that are along the, the part of the dock there. It kind of migrates into this property. So there is a opportunity to kind of tie all these things together organically and kind of come up with a higher design. So that's what I've shown on this film. You haven't taken two pound about a whole headed rain in your east, you have a whole headed uh, dock area that obviously is a very good word. So that kind of discusses what we're looking at during the future. And shoreline protection. What are the other things looking at the rightness? Uh, they have the necessary for any asphalt that can be to pay area. So right now, the bear is laying. It kind of dies down. Or people prohibited on both sides. It is kind of challenging if you don't drop off standpoint because it's narrow. And doesn't provide much maneuverability, so in a vehicle. So our thought is full of street line up towards fairwater. So turn that into green space and once again take an opportunity of that real estate to create a me and path down to the dock. Uh, I show a green yard. I showed some smaller management and official green space. Um. You know, bio mitigation type green infrastructure, those types of things because right now the water goes down to her end of the road and then she flows down and ties into that is that is totally docked and just travels out to the beach. So that would give us much to land and kind of design something and make something work. For erosion, spill order management comes that nature. And then the other improvements are really type of nature. Um, the idea of putting a pavilion, you know, having some type of small shelter in place that will create a focus point within the park, but also something that's useful. Pass that kind of give it off to that. And then it's friends again, whether it's picnic tables, pad of chairs, uh, benches, kind of creating this, like created this like wall wave. I'm giving like a riverwalk feel, but, but not that urban type of design. Very passive in nature. Uh, landscape with bring in some additional trees. Like I said, uh, oh, providing the beach access. You know, once again. If you carry a private town, then you have, you know, an opportunity to bring it down to the beach. We have a small ramp in the dock. By additional. Um, and then other just various buildings like expanding the security camera system. We're going to be putting one down. So, right. And just, you know, any electric home lighting, make that, should have to be irrigation. So all these areas are in the, you know, in the cost estimate. The grant is less than a million dollars basically. Uh, they give you, they give you five hundred, you spent that hundred. So a few million dollars. All of this, various items on here, um, basically from a constructability standpoint. Yes, involve one million. And like I said, the, the concept plan is, is concept in nature. It's for purposes of submitting this grant and with many an engineer who finds if you're learning it.
Well, you're right for president. So um, first I just want to make sure because I think I know it's a concept points. This isn't necessarily the point itself. Are we, we're going to be asking for the full million dollar as soon, right? Um, in this situation with, with the full million dollars cover this concept? And we're curious as to cost in general of what we're talking about here.
The estimate here has actually the quantities with current prices.
I guess, but that covers everything on here, I'm sorry. Including lighting, including taking the road away.
I showed this, it's hard to see. We can show some like, you know, styles, you know. There's just still there. I'm going to take advantage of and try to uh, use the natural font to let it back together.
And, and the living shoreline, so you have pointed out there, which I think is exciting probably a lot of people in the borough, something that's been talked about for a while. Is it a living shoreline? Working up into sort of like what Victory Park has in like a half bulkhead or is it just a living shoreline?
Right now.
In the, in the concept.
In the concept plan, we show a bulkhead. Do they live in shoreline? It's from a bulkhead. And there's a number of properties along the front area that have seen that style. Do you have a natural style? Uh. One's area. And then it grabs those up to the bulkhead. And in some places they even have a nice little fence. Little walkway and very twisted up.
And one of the primary drivers, right? This was one of two places that flooded during Sandy, right? In town. So erosion and protection of that was a practicality that had to ground the concept plan? Question mark?
Erosion protection. Define this section of the river. As I told you, the mountain top, the peninsula where in the further east like towards um the street very. They have more protection because of the land and kind of beanders around. So you don't get that wave fetch like potentially.
Yeah.
From here.
Um, the only, the only other thing I had, and I hadn't realized the property, if the actual site could take some of what you do. But you have a theater that's kind of facing away from where it's sunset. I'm just mentioning, I'm not sure if that's going to be changed. I think a lot of people that are there.
For purposes, it is to kind of show the existing house. We can see the outline.
Yep.
Just for a. Just to get an idea of where it is on the site. We can move that or a house.
Thanks for putting it together.
Oh. Questions. Did this happen to anything in particular or was it a grant to the town? Yeah. And then when it's a, when we authorize the um. We receive this, what's the duration of time between that point on and when we'll actually see a recognition and we have to do that for the season. It's like the more location.
So there's a few, few timelines in your apps to submit the grant. They've been making a board, I guess, going around November.
Why just, Tracy, you refer to, sorry, councilor called. We referred to the um, site stabilization. The uh.
I am.
Okay, okay. That's, that's what I wanted to record too. So, um, so Rich, Rich can talk about that.
We um. Our insurance just submitted draft or flat draft. Uh, did specifications and drawings for that project. We had asked to, I recommend we put on for its next meeting, which we did. So we anticipate bidding that rather than the type of fact that they're in the next several weeks.
And then that's my question. When is it the thirty day turnaround? How soon will you have those numbers?
Uh, we bid for a minimum of ten days for public contracts. Typically I have ordered to that.
Okay.
So you, you know, usually ten to fifteen days.
After that, we'll know how much money we have to pay or our.
Based on reviewing bids. Uh, the interview myself.
Right.
That, yes, that's just, I'll have some, yeah, that, that will be taking the, the important thing on that question. It'll be all stabilized. Um, by the way. Hey, it's not that long, you know, that's far away.
Thank you. One weather just got here. Please don't rush it, only.
I think Nancy.
So. Close and dance this.
Nancy has something to say.
Uh. So just to comment on the availability of our matching funds. This could be the amount. Doesn't mean that we can certify that a hundred percent, but what's left is a bet. So the wall dependent will be a formal, any little problems, some change orders that may come along. On a matter.
So guys, just to follow up. So let's say there was a hundred bucks. Do, do we account for a hundred and twenty dollars? Just in case for potential runaway change orders like.
The percentage of part of the job.
Yes. Perfect.
Okay. Uh, that was my question. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Um, you explained the living shoreline and bulkhead, and I'm not as familiar of doing both. I kind of know either, either, either or. But in your research, having the living shoreline or the bulkhead behind the living shoreline is the best way to go? Like for the entire length of it, or it looks like the living shoreline is kind of half of it in your estimation?
No, it's, it's a particular parcel. Uh, historically had a hole in it, whether it's concrete or timber, it's a combination of both. It also has an area of beach that kind of vibrates in even the west off of our dock. And during uh extreme low tides, we may not even get to the beach down by the Marina side. So the thought is we need to stabilize that. And bulkhead is obviously you know, from an engineering standpoint. And then the other piece of it, as we move grass on the property, gives you an opportunity to to introduce a little bit of shoreline.
So you don't feel like a living shoreline is, would hold, hold enough there would be stabilized, will stabilize it enough? Is that kind of what you're saying?
I think what would happen and we have it on like engineering design this again, but essentially looking at an elevation, there's a property. I think the living shoreline is completely be into a lot of existing property, actively constructed way back to be effective for that entire coverage in all the work. If we were going to go all the.
So you're saying to get enough beach kind of, or?
To get enough, to get effective living shoreline that remains stabilized, like that would stand in the recenter. And you don't want to build something and then have it break down.
Definitely.
So, um. The man obviously comes down and then it flattens out. It seems a lot of, a lot of that flatter area that you have to put in like a fifty foot, it'll go home into the number, but say a, a pretty good wide buffer area of living shoreline, really get it distilled.
So I wanted to just, if I may, share this one because I appreciate your questions and councilor La Rivera, you know, I read a lot of his pieces where the advisor could use that and questions, you know, along, so is a couple, by the way, um. But we agree, you know, without much to keep we in like writing now, but there's need for a little more full some analysis that'll help the government body determine, um. What is the proper stabilization that's from our, if you're just putting together. Given this, so what hearing's got the background. So there might be even added layer of assessment that for one.
Yeah.
The alternate design. Um, I know this is simple for the application, but it answers a lot of the questions, but not all.
Yeah.
And I think the purpose of the grant. It's important to show both okay and living shoreline. So that's what we're, it's a catch. It's just much harder to look back to Mon County and say, oh, then decide on the one which is bulkhead and it might be for the cost of this much. They, they say, no, that's not.
Yeah.
You remember the last problem coming down and paying for the bulkhead interest. Part of the project.
Yeah.
My, my only other question, Tom, regarding uh, that's one of Demaselli's question is, we had originally discussed that if we ever did do a little shoreline at this property. We would get, um, you know, the pricing power of actually doing the normandy at the same time. How does the grant affect that scenario? I'm assuming we can apply for the money at the normandy as part of this grant. It's a separate parcel.
I think part of the, I think my estimate is servant that takes into account various parameters and different parts. If you decide to bid another project.
Can you add an addendum within the bid specs? Like addendum A could be the normandy bulkhead. And we would be able to fund Nancy the main part of the bid, which is the grant, and then have it done in a funded separately. Does it work that way?
Thanks for the process.
Got it. Check, check.
But from the birth, that's not safe. And the other one exactly.
Cover that.
Then there's a big chance the contractor will see that there are both sites at the same time or give you.
Yeah.
And then you don't have to accept that if you don't like the pricing on the loan, you don't have to accept.
And I just, I just have a couple of things. So that, that was kind of where I was going, councilman Paul. And did you mention that we will have like a separate engineer come in after? That's kind of like the next step. Did I hear you say that?
So. I think there was a good beach, the effect of the concept plan.
Totally. I just want to make sure. Yeah, okay. That's what I just want to make sure.
I'll punch a comment after your phone.
Yep. And then just out of curiosity, what is the path made out of? Is it cement? Is it?
It's bricks.
Oh, it's brick. Okay.
Going on a story for strips. And I thought she must have been in mind when this is very standard in the digital.
Okay. I like that. Those are my questions.
Um, just a few things, Rich. Really nice work. Um. To level set just data points and whatnot. So all of the open houses, uh, council meetings, committee boards. All of that feedback was centralized and identified the concept plan components as of today from resident engagement, liaison feedback, et cetera. And there was a report put together to support that. Um, the governing body members all have access to the SharePoint site. Where all the documents are. There's, there's twenty plus documents that round the regulatory compliance. There's twenty plus documents and all the feedback. All of it's there for digestion availability. So that's kind of what helps to facilitate some of the initial um, thought behind the concept plan. Two key next steps between concept and design. Um, obviously is getting the grant. Um, but beyond that is uh, traffic and parking analysis. Um, in that area, which is critical and bringing in the expert. Um, in that area, which is critical, and bringing in an expert for that, and then the environmental and landscape, um, uh, aspects. Especially given where it is, so what the governing body approved back in March was bringing in those two professionals. To help provide the additional analysis, the additional technical specs that are required to inform. Um, and then once we do have a updated design, then we would go back and do additional open houses. Feedback and follow the same process that we did with facilities, brush and leave, trash and recycling. Um, allowing resident feedback to drive where it ultimately gets refined to. Um, so quick background on the concept plan components, everybody has access to all the information. And then quick level set on kind of next steps between concept and design, thanks, Fair.
Um, before I ask for a vote, if anyone in the public, if I have any comments on this. Well, Allison, is there anyone online that has any comment, any comment on this?
No, I don't have that.
Uh, is there a motion approved?
Motion.
Second.
Paula David.
Aye.
Thank you, all right. Uh, we're moving on to public comments upon agenda against only. Since it's her, a three minute time limit, to be safe, remain in that, just for the record, if anyone in the public, a public comment on agenda and don't. Will Allison?
No.
Thank you.
Approval of who? During nine twenty five regular meeting. Do I have motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Allison May, please, I have a.
Councilmember's call.
Yes.
Can you say?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, we're now on to all business, hearing adoption warnings, we're on twenty twenty five dash eleven, to amend chapter. Seven dash thirty nine point one, festival parking space, either avenue right out front, I have a motion to open.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone up here have anything on this? Anyone in the public, wanna discuss this? Allison, anyone online?
No.
Is that a motion approved?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Allison May, please have a local.
Do we have somebody to talk to?
Motion, motion to adopt twenty twenty five dash eleven.
Second. Councilmember's call.
Yes.
Can you say?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Pass.
Yes.
Affirmative.
Awesome.
Here. Um, thank you, uh, next up is new business, this is set agenda, we're talking about resolutions twenty twenty five dash one eighty one through one ninety three. Um, before I ask for a motion to approve, is there anyone that has anything up here?
Uh, just, uh, one comment of kudos, Chris, Nick, uh, thank you both, uh, the first one on here is getting our. Uh, fleet manager and our fleet mechanic, it's a huge win, so many thanks to both of you, uh, for that. Yeah.
I'd like to separate twenty twenty five, one eighty four.
Okay, so right now we're talking about resolutions twenty twenty five, one eighty one. Through one eighty three, and then one eighty five to one ninety three, um, do I have a motion to approve of it?
Motion, second.
Allison May, please have a local.
Councilmember's call, yes, can you say?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Pass.
Yes.
Over there.
Affirmative.
Call home.
Thank you, councilman Demetella, do you want discussion or does it separate vote?
Discussion for just kind of questions a little bit, so I absolutely support the money going towards Poplar Avenue. My concern is that it's a pretty big flooded street that floods. And so if we're going to re-surface and do sidewalks and all that stuff. I think that we need to address the drainage issues before we commit to paving or commit to, but then have some kind of, have a plan to address. Cause they're one of the streets that has been flooding.
It's my understanding, usually when we do these photographs, that's part of it.
So would that be like the stormwater management, looking at the pipe, like, so the pipes?
They forward.
So that was the plan was to address that at the same time that we're doing this?
Just be a normal.
Okay. Then, then I'm okay with, I just want to make sure.
Uh, so. Councilman Demetella, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, motion through twenty twenty five, one eighty four.
Second.
Uh.
Councilmember's have a local.
Councilmember's call, yeah.
Can you say? Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Pass.
Yes.
Affirmative.
Thank you, uh, next up is the park reports, maybe twenty twenty five, police department, and the municipal court, and.
Do I have a motion to accept, please, thank you.
Kristen?
Yes, motion.
With a major?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Paula David.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, so we're, you're gonna defer on portion meeting, gonna be for all the rest of the public, we're gonna defer on, um. Few things I want to get through here, uh, our mayor for the day, came very, very prepared today. And she brought into my. Um, maybe oral executive orders for twenty twenty five. The gavel has her name on it, it's in front of candy kittens and puppies. Which is pretty much the coolest thing ever.
I think we should have more candies, kittens.
So, we're gonna alternate, um, there's, there's ten executive order where she's speaking here, we're gonna alternate. Nine, oh, you don't want that one, one, I, I think you should stick with that one, I like that one, you sure? So we're gonna, we're gonna alternate on the nine of them, we're gonna read them, so, so they're on the record, so everyone who stands. And Mayor Delaney, when she puts it out there, she delivers, right? All right, so you want to read number one? Overhead roof from the softball field dugouts, I think that's, roofs, I think that's a good idea, right? Uh, the next one, number two, I think we should have a term wide fish tank near the Fairhaven Dock. So Rich, I didn't see that.
Wow, that is.
So, number three. I totally did that.
The neutral colors are boring.
Um, number four, I think that we should have a party at the beginning of summer that signals to all the kids that school is out. Right?
I think we shall a sec, a section of area to deal with the dog park, for great value, so all the dogs. In the town, they have place to play better.
And what a, what a very, and that's actually an idea that comes to me a lot, and, um, just I think that was so thoughtful of you, and I love the name. Birdie's Belly Rumps, do you have a dog named Birdie? Yeah, that's what I figured. Uh, next up, we should have a seafood restaurant on the Fairhaven Dock.
Mm-hmm.
And we discussed today some of her favorite restaurants that she eats at as well, right? The next one's not gonna happen, I'm letting you know, but even. We should have a zip line in Fairhaven Field. Soval's having a heart attack over there. This one I actually love, uh, very much, we should have a fountain in the middle of our town, wouldn't that be lovely, right? Yep, and this one's for the chief, but the chief's not here, but Kenny Schonberg is, so he's gonna listen to this one.
We should close our section of Richard Rowland Santa Con, so no guests hurt.
Good idea, right? Good idea, so I, I think she did a fantastic job, and, uh, so did the entire governing body, so. As a token of our appreciation, um, we all signed this for you, Delaney. Right, this used to hang on River Road. It was from our centennial, which I believe is two thousand twelve, I think it was the day, and it's signed by all of us up here. And you're gonna get to take this home with you today and hang it on your wall, regardless you want, okay? All right, guys. Yeah, the lady did an amazing job today, um, I've never had so many questions personally. But also every staff member she spoke to, she brought a lot of energy to Pearl Hall today, to the police department. And, uh, you know, thank you for sharing her with us, we, we loved it. Um, we are so in the borough, so I'm sure there might be some people here, if you have a little borough comment, you stand or identify yourself. I feel the same name and address for the record. And then would they, could they borrow from?
Hello, Gary, uh, I live across from the DPW, um, and it was kind of set up in. Eight foot, that's three quarters around, properly with the six foot fence to start, with now two thousand nine. That end, looks like it's very across my property, and the fence has been cut out, we told her that was gonna be the. And I was at one point, when it changed, so the BN, my neighbors, are all kind of upset, the back. They went from five hundred gallons to two thousand, and didn't move to somewhere where it wouldn't be in my segment. So, like I said, it was, uh. The new year in my house, of a huge gathering, the sign said, gas, no, please stay back. You play some from the park watch. Um, why wasn't tech moved to the issue wherever, covered by the defense, why is a defense on three sides? And now, and we're, it's. And I just, we're just curious of why, and they didn't move the tank or put a shooting fence in the front, like they were told, it's their hat.
So, uh, you still don't get all the way down? You got it?
Yeah.
Oh, so I don't remember the exact timeline, obviously, because we had a lot of meetings about this. But I do recall discussing about the front of the fence, the recognition of us was if you put it too high, you're now looking like a prison. Um, pipe scenario, the question I have for you, is there not landscaping that's in front of that, that's gonna grow and mature and?
Five years?
Yes.
With five years from me, and there are documents of gravity, it's impacting more.
So that's something we are addressing as far as the tree themselves, and I'm sure they'll follow up on that, but. Yeah, I mean, we're, the, the idea that we're gonna move the gas tank there. To another area from a financial fiscal sense, I could have the borough in here, kind of talk about it, it just wouldn't make sense with Borough Bear.
When you move five hundred gallons to two thousand gallons, you decide to put a very.
It was, it was six thousand gallons, four thousand and two thousand.
Previously.
And went in dual, six, it's pretty great, same capacity.
There, one of them, there's double one hat there.
But it's, it's now dual chain of the tank, what they call.
But it's three to nine, I think, whole whole piece. The other one was covered by that.
The other one was four thousand gallon, the other was ten.
And, and it was six foot tall.
You're, you're correct, yes, you're correct, yeah. A hundred percent.
Alls I see is three foot of gas type of, it's covered up. And I was told that trees in front, what we were told, there was gonna be eight foot fence.
It was never, it just took, it was never an eight foot fence in the front because of the gate, and I, I can go back. I, I personally met with the residents on Allen, it's always been six on Allen Street, because we had practicalities with the forty five foot swing gates. That have to go in, so it's always been six, what we did after we confirmed it was six with the fuel tank, we actually changed the type of tree. And what I'm told is, is they're green giants, and within twelve to eighteen months is when you will start to see more of the landscaping that was put in place. Than the tank, that was the intent.
Why not, but you from that, however, and having trees grow over the eight foot fence.
Because.
And it's not gonna look like there's been so long, there's a treaty drawn, like you said, trees are gonna cover it, it would cover the fence too.
Totally, and if it was one dimensional, totally get it, I'm full agreement, it's when you apply the other practicalities, what had to do with the type of swing gate. How much mechanical is required, help me out here, Rich, I'm not going into all the technical details. And then also the design of the way that the entrances look, and so we worked very closely with, with Allen Street specifically. Okay, so that's. Appreciate that, yeah.
This was both of us, five hundred, where we probably would be a two foot wall, six foot from the top, to maybe. So where I'm back in, I'm not changing something, because I know it's changing sometime, you know this.
Yeah.
But I don't understand, like, now, I have to look at a three foot gas panel, the part which I never saw before, it didn't top. But now, with a silence, I'm pretty standing back.
Understood, understood.
Which, for my reset, is not gonna be good. So it's like, why don't, the, for both of them, move somewhere where it's not.
There's two costs prohibitive to move it.
I, it's, it's plus for, I, I do, I just wanna, I do want to make it fair, I'm not minimizing your concern, because. I think it's a real concern, but the landscaping is gonna grow, and you, you're just turning on one singular issue. The entire site is much better looking than we're still looking for.
Exactly.
We put a lot of, almost to the point where today, group tests do, I got upset when I saw a bill when we're discussing sprinklers for landscaping. Cause I felt we were putting too much landscaping, and now we have to put in sprinklers, we have to hang it. So we've invested a lot of dollars trying to beautify an area which is, it is a DPW, and it's, you know. And, and that, and that landscaping is gonna mature, and it is, and if it does die, it's brown, we're gonna put something else new in there. It's not like we're just gonna let it die and say, sorry, Joe, you know, it's not once.
Very, it's strange about our grasses, my ass, it doesn't.
I, I hear.
And, and my point is that you should put a eight foot fence, and one point to right, because now, you have a two foot. Fence line on the side, it's two feet gap, and then it's two, six feet all the way across the.
How, how high was the fence, uh, before?
I think it was actually higher.
It was six.
It was six. Hey, I mean, the reason I know that is because I. I was at the council meeting, this is well before I was mayor, when everyone long for money on every, every street, there used to be eight, I think. Everywhere around the entire site.
Free standing.
No.
It was eight.
Originally eight, and when they switched it, they, when they were placing the entire fence, they went to, they went to six, so you, you know. It's been six in the front of that lot, since I can remember at least. Again, I, I can't speak to you, I can't, I really, you know, as far as, when I'm dealing with the same capacity, right? You know, the borough's area goes making decisions in the best interest of the borough area, and I think that when you think about the landscaping, the fact that it's gonna mature. At the end of the day, you're gonna have the best of both worlds in every situation.
And I have one question for Rich, the sign that he can see from his house, I don't know if it's oriented to.
Spritz around that, around that.
Red or the.
Anyway.
I can actually, because jump out and on landscape, so we can see, or you have to work to decide instead of.
Does it have to face that direction for like some safety or?
Um, they need to look at.
We, we can take a look at, I think it's part of the, that's our good of the tank, that in, in they do the tank, so.
We can look at.
And we can look at.
But yeah, we knew that they, the new tank, it was gonna be three feet higher, then they, they're a bit concerned. But then also the tank, I'm like, well, they've been, they've got, they're putting a huge fence here, it's gonna cover, we're not gonna see it. And then they go to six, but now, like, now I gotta build this every day? And nobody told us that they're gonna put a dual tank that's gonna be three foot higher than the fence, which makes no sense, I, I understand it's possible, but I don't wanna see it.
Yeah.
Anybody else about my house is not gonna want to see it, so to me, it's like.
We, we, we think, I can't speak for, I should say, I should, I think that at the end of the day, with mature landscaping. Um, the value of that is a big, not a big, my personal opinion, and I think that we've done significantly invested in the entire area. Beautified, and every situation would be perfect, I'm not saying it is, you know, like, and I even not minimalizing years of playing. I'm just telling you, you know, the, the way that I look at this, if when that landscaping gets higher, let's take a look at that sign, I think, I think if anything, you'd be more than cool.
Or if you did eight foot fence, so it put a break from the gate, and it changed the six foot.
Be, be, the, the feedback, I remember from the presentation, I'm not the expert, was that an eight foot fence in the front? Not even to see anything inside the DPW whatsoever, it made the area look like. What we would have thought would define.
For eight foot, separate, eight foot fence just around, there'll be a.
A block in them? Inside.
There's followers, there's followers around. There's bollards, there's bollards around, so you have to have bollards in order from a safety, security perspective. So, it'd have to be beyond that, and then you start to eat into the pathway where the trucks have to fuel.
Of course, I think we, uh, Darren, if you're thinking about my mother.
We'll, we'll take a look at it. You know, we don't not want to improve it for you. But at the same time, you have to be practical with the fact that it's a, you know, operational department of the court.
Which I, I don't mind generally with trucks, so it's not, it's not. It's the, the three foot of, of a gas type that now standing out right across from the front of us.
Get him a bigger tree.
Get him a bigger tree? Well, we're not a target. Well, we'll, we're, we're gonna take a look at different items and we'll figure that.
Uh, so my other, my other issue, so. And I've walked through town before addition of stormwater already in my property. So, the picture through the years, when I raised it, what happens in my house? So, my neighbor behind my house put a, a retaining wall around this swing set. And at one point, it's on the eighteen twenty-fourth side, and on the side, it's bollards. But when we put this, now all order from his drains, which faced toward my property, which is what his houses. A foot and a half higher than that, my property, everything comes this way. So, my, um, driveway on the back of my property. Where's the excess wall there, but that's coming to be this way. And my driveway, which is in the back of my property, has some dirt and drains, and you go to the back, and it's full. And now all orders come out, and it's roting my whole property. It's, it's important that we have our patio fixed once, and it's already sunk down, an inch and a half, over a year and a half. And this is the door code, and you put it there, it's far a bit down, and it's a lot, you know. The thing is, you, I sent the picture of what it looks like, and it's come to the point that now, and. It's bad, like, every time we're leaving, we're getting tired, I have to be home, it's gonna flood my basement. And I brought this up to the rich, we talked about this, what, flare for now, that's eighteen inches. Now, they just renovated the whole house. So, my question is, when you file for permanent, you permanently expire this? Do you have to refile for the permanent before you go?
Now, in this particular matter, who was zoning for, neighbor, ask his parents, is, got the little rules. Went through that whole damage process. They're all going for this, they started work, they're not aware of any technicality, like where they have. It's fire, they're, they're already fired.
So, so, let me just jump in, because recently, I feel like the, for the borough, I think that's sort of a human error. And I also don't wanna start to pick a position until we're not informed of. But I'm hearing, you know, a bit of frustration and situation, so why don't you know the details, the?
Yeah, I, yeah, I have a good thing, I'll add a little bit more to it. Uh, we had also been about that, I had information. Uh, Rich and I, we've had a recent conference, work for his own, he's here, his own work, discussed this matter. Uh, I know, uh, Mark, only long, I've reached out to the neighbor, um, I do, um, use his house and affect him, or let's basically affect him worse. And, um, like, we have been in contact with the boss. This is the matter that is being investigated by everybody on, I have a problem as well. What I do want to know is.
No, the only thing I can add is, um, we are in the process of setting up a meeting with, with your neighbor into that. I, I had an email in this, I just asked him. Obviously, he's not maybe the C O.
So, that's why I, I want to know if the C O's issue you had, I wanna make sure that it's taken care of, because I, guys, I don't think it's true.
Well, thank you, thank you, Gary. Anyone else from the problem, bro?
Hey, uh, Mr. Lewis. I don't have a person to communicate with, that's my, that's my third street. I talked to you, um, I just wanna say you guys did that same job. Yo, it's my neighbor. So, defense is a concern. Um, my question is. I wanna know the. How do you keep? The level of offense is short, so how do you keep the security of the kids or anybody? Telling them all over to get into the public works? If something was to happen, what, before was higher, correct? Why didn't it?
It was higher, let's say, um, close to ten years ago, but most recently it's six, correct?
Free Sandy, it was eight foot, and then in Sandy, the most of the fence blew down, and they replaced it with six foot. And that's why the gate always looked mismatched. If, if you remember the gates before they took them alive. Correct. So, for the last, I, I forget when Sandy was, twelve? Right? So, four, thirteen years ago, yes, it was eight foot, but thirteen years ago, it wasn't.
Somebody's asking that the fence was smoother. It didn't have where it was defined.
Yeah, so the current fence is board, is board on board.
All, all I said, it's not like it was cool. Right? I'll confirm that for you. Um, but also from the other standpoint from the security side, we don't also wanna let people know exactly where the cameras are going. Like, these are opportunities to try and do things outside of doing the cameras. I will confirm offline with you, so you're aware.
No, I mean.
Hundred percent.
Yep.
My other main concern, I talk, I talk to you in the public. Across the street from me, the landscaping. Is it finished in that park? Because it, it looks.
Not yet.
And the landscaping company you guys hired. They was on breakboard and it was on work. I don't know, and I'm not telling on them, but it is what it is.
Yeah.
I've been there, I've been here a long time, and I just feel, who have they not looked at that landscaping? How they put everything in one hall and everything in another hall? The outside was nice, even though some of the trees are over. They're, they're gonna crawl over. But the park side, as anybody asks, you walk through that, look at the shoot, my land, shoot shot. You guys pay for beautiful bushes, plants? Why do they put everything in? They didn't spread out the design, they didn't spread the flowers out like.
Probably was just too much for the staging, but. No, the Maple, Maple Avenue people think the Allen Street landscaping looks great. The Allen Street people think that the, um.
Well, I'm third street.
Third street, third street landscaping looks great, and third street people think that the Maple Avenue landscaping is great.
So, we all, Allen Street always had the best time.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah.
So, um, the way that it was installed was how it was designed. We had the landscape architects who designed it work side by side with the landscaper. They actually changed some of the plants as we were getting feedback from the residents with the fuel tanks was one of them to make it higher. There was some other feedback on the other side. So, it was done to design, and there was the professional who designed it out there while they were doing it. Um, coming back to the, uh, the safety question on the fence, the, the, I'll always defer to the police on safety. But the reason board on board was selected, separate from resident feedback on Allen Street and Maple. Was because the previous fence was smooth. I don't know how else to call it, right? It was flush. And, and what, and what happened was that when in extreme instances of wind, it actually damaged the fence. So, what the recommendation was from the design professionals was you want board on board, because board on board allows wind to pass through. And we didn't wanna create a scenario where the fence was failing quicker than, than it should be based on what we paid. So, I just wanted to give you the data points. It's not done. Yeah. Correct. So, the plan is, is it's a specific type of seed, and I can't remember.
Four? It's four lands?
It was never, it wasn't finished, so what we needed to wait to happen was the fence to be done. Because we didn't wanna add in additional components while the fence wasn't being finished. Fence is.
That's my next concern.
Yep. So, the fence, um, and I can talk offline there if you want, this was, um, so what's left of the fence is, is to install the two main gates. Where the entrance and exit is, and to install three other smaller gates, one for the recycling center, and then there's two on the Maple Avenue side.
We, that, they both have been done in June.
Yep.
And now the kids are at school, that's another concern. We talked to a couple of people downtown. Seen a couple of kids try to get into that truck.
Yep.
I'm, I'm tired, you know, and I know the town, I'm all bored, and I'm not complaining. My concern is about the kids.
Hundred percent.
I'm tired of calling. I have a right to sit in my home wherever I want, I'm not nosy, I live there. Unfortunately, it's right in front of me. I gotta hear that, hey, hey.
Yeah.
Boom, smashing cardboard. If you jump, you can't even lay down. I understand, everything's in progress. My main question is, how much longer? Is it another month? Is it all summer? Who got the answer to it? It's finished the fence. Two people put that fence up, he, he, you know.
Mike did a great job, yeah. Um, I'll get you an answer. Let me talk to confirm when the fence is gonna be installed. The last remaining piece are the gates, and then to finish the landscaping. So, that's, so the only two things remaining for the project to be officially done.
So, yes, and you guys can put like a vinyl. Like my backyard, like a piece of vinyl that just covers the facing of the gas tank. We know that the police department got pulling, Borough House got to get gas. You can't have it that we can't see it?
I can bring it back to the professor. Yeah.
Yeah. If we can, if we can do something that's reasonable, we're gonna do it. We don't, you know, I, I think we've shown the entire job of our.
To be honest, we didn't realize it was gas tank. To be honest, we didn't, we didn't see it.
No, you, you saw the exhaust pipes, and there was a light that was over top of it. We removed the light because we were told on Allen Street that it was an obstruction having the light bleed over, right?
At the public works, is it, is that public works?
There's, there's a problem, we're able to install or.
That's the panel, right? The panel?
There's a, uh.
It's fried, it, yeah.
Flow inside the tank, and the flow is getting stuck or some problem with electronics.
Yeah, it came to me, because I, I've been calling downtown, and I know they know my name. Um, but my next main concern, across the street from me, going into the park. Has anybody walked in the entrance of that park, come a shot of stuff? I mean, two kids fall, little kid falling, hurt his mouth because of the frame you drive him.
It's part of, yeah, you are a hundred percent correct. And part, and part of the PD community center is to finish, it's, they call it restoration. So, the contractor, you, the, and some part of it is just to fix all that. We're working.
We're the garbage park at. If somebody, if the kid is coming out that corner. The garbage public park there, so it's blind sign, that's the entrance to the park. People, you can park, that should be like the, like a no parking, I don't know how town. When they have baseball, how they have events, and they don't have a sign that says, no parking in the entrance of a park. Parks is parked right there.
They're not gonna have the opportunity to park there for much longer. Uh, we're on it, we're definitely gonna, and we're also gonna have the contractor take a look. Make sure it's not a safety issue even before they restore that area.
Yeah, it's bad over there. Don't, oh, and I know they had to cut through and do what.
Yeah, appreciate it.
So, I think, I think our main concern was about covering that fence, the gas thing, okay?
And we'll follow up on the cameras offline. Yep.
Oh, there was a slab that was on the net. Grading period, and then found a cavity, and then had to remove all their concrete. At one point, they, somebody asked if there was a structure there, that they can remove the gas tank, or that, and then the doorway, so. There was already a, a foundation there.
I don't think it's like rolling a gas tank, like, you need to what?
The gases came out of the ground.
We didn't know, we didn't know the slab was there until we started digging. There was no mention of it, and also, in that scenario, then we would have had to kept the D P W site as large as it was. And one of the design considerations was to shrink the site to make it less of an industrial site into the residential area.
We are pleased about the work. After all, he said he could tell that there was a slab that they used to meet the shit that.
Sure. Okay, yeah, understood.
Anyone else?
I'm Shannon, I'm, you know, I live at sixty-three Maple Avenue, I'm reading down the street. Um, I'm just here to talk about my concerns about the redevelopment of the fiscal channel parking lot. Um, I talked to Chris and Drew last week, um, and. Our overall concerns are safety concerns for the parking lot. Um, they're disappointed in the fact, I know this has been, throughout this has been, so, um. Looking across the street from it, we, you know, watch how a brat have to come together, that's great, um. But we were never aware that A, the town, not the parking lot, um, and B, what the plans were for the parking lot. Um, you know, your neighbor gets, has to ask for a, or you can announce, and get some sort of certified, manual, something about it. Um, and all of them down our street, none of our neighbors have been informed about what was sitting out. Um, it was really brought to our attention last week when the trees started to pop up. And when the trees started coming down last time, when they reached out, these guys were great, and then met us outside, and we didn't know what was going on, um. And our first concern was just, you know, our first disappointment was that it was gonna be paved, and, and. You know, it was a nice, we're moving from having a parking lot, private parking lot of nice quiet neighbors. To a massive paved parking lot, um. For public use directly across the street from our house. Um, we, at this point, our biggest concern is the safety issue. Um, Maple Avenue has been pretty narrow street, um, and when speaking with these guys last week. We didn't realize until later that I didn't even have the plans, that it's thought to be a thirty parking, thirty parking space. What? Um, and I just, you know, I, my request is that the project slow down. And that the project get input from the neighbors. Um, I'm concerned about the safety on the street. No one's shared with us, we requested and no one shared with us. A safety study on the street, um. And I think that's hurting, I think it's a, it's a permanent, something that is very permanent that's going on. Before we get too far, um, we'd like to, A, have our neighbors, we like having, but, um, and. We'd like to see and know more about the safety study that happened.
It may, I just want correction, I just ready, uh, uh, turning to the call. Did you mention that it's now purchased that parking lot? Town is not a lot of parking lot. Town has, the, the parking lot is about still long to the church. We have amusement, um, when we go to church, it's all for that, obviously, you need to know how.
Yeah, so we worked out, we played with, um, the church. To do a perfectly, that was about all the academy, so. It's a long placement, but we did not purchase, we did not commit funds for capital towards, uh, the east wing, the property.
Trying to save those, we have.
That's why I'm standing up to me and congratulating. And, and frankly, that's great, I mean, thank you, we're fine. What we're splitting hairs with, uh, terms of, the concern is the safety, and the concern is the lack of. Well, a lot of communication that the neighbors have gotten about it, and we went on one several times and looked through every tag on the varied website. And on there, we couldn't find anything about, you know, the run of the picture. I mean, Drew sent it to us last, you know. Started again, and then last week, um. But like, we would have absolutely been involved with an acquisition, um. But we didn't have that, um, so now here we are, and it hasn't, it hasn't been, it hasn't been finished. And I just, we do wanna go on the record, and they, you know, it's, it's a really, really narrow street. The street's narrow at the end, river, this river, and you have thirty cars. You know, moving in and out of there multiple times a day. I realized that it took some of the cars off the street. But where that street is, is not wide like this is, um, it's not. I just, it, it, for a great concern, that's on the neighbors.
I have a quick question, procedurally, did we do a capital review for this improvement, the planning board?
N T D, N T D R, uh, T D R.
Well, that's a committee, they wouldn't.
Was part of the capital, you have to go to the technical design review committee prior to go. No, but they would have had the briefings at the planning boards.
My question is, was there a two hundred, and I'm not really asking you, although I. Yes, sir. If we did do a capital review, what was the two hundred foot notice certainly?
I don't remember. I don't recall. I don't think, it's not a requirement. It's only a requirement for zoning when you go for a variance, right? But we did have the open houses. We went all to the governing body means, went to the plan door means. We did talk about the safety concerns, right? We, we were widening fists, right? Cause that created the bottleneck there. We're shrinking the size of the apron. Right? All of that went in. I gotta defer to the police on the safety concerns. I can't speak to that because.
The apron. It. It was there and giving that.
I think the police department had, uh, originally had a tree floor towards the spot, so compared to the wrong, um, and had fish out that spots. I think now, just the fish out of the line, from those type of bottoms where, you know, whether it's a fire alarm or literally, we want to have residents parking all the street like crazy, so they were parking like any lot. And sometimes it was walking, there's no parking. So unfortunately, we're still having a significant amount of traffic. I think now the borough is just lining it, and letting the people accessible and nicer with the air. I guess we turned the whole streets around the area of our town. Um, but we did have some traffic, though. They'll probably have been interestingly lined up.
Call that your street to meet my neighbors first. I know shit's all gonna go shit to me, but you have. Right in that.
I'm not trying to answer this word, if you're not like.
I just feel like I'm speaking.
It's a one way.
One way.
You know, two cars, I think it's hard to pass. Comfortable, which is on like that. I'm here, I, I love being able to, it's always been out. As a matter of fact, they need to widen that zone, but they put them to, uh, they took some of the church. When they put them to the police thing, that rolled to me, they why you don't know, because the feedback on that.
So I guess the point is sort of, for the efficiency of the conversation, I mean, can there be, you know, true and impressive and perceptible, not just. Frankly, we do want to fish in the low rent. We, before it was anything, we do wanna have more conversation. You're talking about, you know, public conversations that we were talking about, marketing and meetings for things like river and things like that. We know that. Um, and in fact, we cut up, we, we came when, you know, Chris knocked on our door and asked us if we wanted to come through and it was first being, oh, you know, it was finishing up. Nobody mentioned it, uh, like, hey, we just walked across the street from your house. Did you know, or taking this is completely changing use, like, you know?
So, um.
What's in the process?
Well, I think the process is already good, good out. I think the parking lot is already good design, like, for every.
And it's, and a lot of these conversations, even if we made, I mean, I don't know if we go back, nothing else we do is I think that go back, I hate it. Um, so that's, what, uh, sixteen, seventeen months ago, um, that these conversations about the parking lot had, that we were about to buy. Yeah, they put those YouTube things, they were, they had really various specials about, uh, what that happened like. They did a very quick, they thought into detail that, meaning several weeks after that, as far as the plans for that. And then, like, I don't know, someone knows the dates better than I do. There were all discussions, this was after I had started as a district director, um, as far as impact on store water. Then there's discussion on that, and when we actually brought the plan of it, as far as having a store water intervention system that, and separately, you found that. Like store water intervention you put in, out of the parking lot, so.
There, there was, say that there was never a discussion at the level.
Well, I'm not speaking that.
And for many, they needed help, need further, for discussions, um, discussing designing.
He's an old project, and like I, I'm sending a lot of these videos for this project. And we discussed this a lot, multiple times. So I'm not saying that what you're seeing online is not accurate, it's maybe, but like, I, it's gotta show up in the minutes in some of the presentations we have done. The old part of the project that, um, came sort of at the last second from my perspective was some of the trees. Um, and I think that was because of the fence line.
Correct. The encouragement.
They, they couldn't, they couldn't fit the fence without taking out some of the trees. And that situation, I was told, uh, the borough filed a tree permit. Did what they were supposed to do. So, you know, my understanding of the project is if the borough wasn't even involved in it, and the church wanted to build the exact same parking lot, then the borough would take their own agreement, um, there wouldn't even be any zoning mechanisms involved. I believe that they would be entitled to do that. Is that correct? You know, I'm, hey, I, I don't wanna mislead you and say like, we're going down this road here where, you know, when you redesign a parking lot that's already been designed and, uh, is getting ready to be built out, I'm like, certainly want to hear your feedback, see how we can do better and see if, is anything some mechanism that you bring up to us that you could potentially change, much like Joe, that make like better views. So if you wanna email me what your thoughts are and concerns, I'd love to have a conversation with Chris Carlos, but I also don't want you to think that like this is gonna stop the momentum of the overall parking lot.
I, we kind of considered that, right?
Sure.
We explore all possible options, whether they say E I E mirrors, I V speed bumps, I V crossbars, or whatever, whatever the options are. Can we explore all give up?
Absolutely. Did that achieve?
That's what I was wondering.
I would hope that we do that in every single situation, every single tree, every single path of that, and that's absolutely. It's something that we can do. If you have suggestions, let us know. Um, I can say the same thing I said, uh, um, regarding the fuel thing. We're not looking to make like worse for our records. We're trying to make it better. We don't win out on every single point of every single resident. Um, but we really try to do our best. So if you have any information you can send us, we'll be happy to take a look at it collectively. And I'm sure it'll be really with some of the engineers and I'm sure it will be happening.
On comparative account, probably half of us, very similar situation. There's gotta be opportunities for us as far. And I, I think if you mustn't expect that, it should be a partnership.
So like some, just to clarify the record, we do explore those things all the time. And it's what led to the meeting council and all having animated discussion about class problem of the street. And it wasn't a bad idea, but it's, it's, it's based on what's realistic. And a good example is, um, you mentioned speed bumps. So they've looked at speed bumps with that, so renovation has been not completed. I don't know exactly why, you know, one of the reasons was so loud, that a good reason why I have speed bumps? I don't know. I think it's more of a collective discussion of multiple different things based on the situation at each street and what's going on. So she brought up, she has concerns about the safety of children or pedestrians. That's something that I think everyone up there knows it's home of baby, you know? So if you have any suggestions, please let me know. I'm sure the police department will take a second look, the engineers will take a second look and, you know, but I, you know, I don't wanna mislead you. If there's, there's a parking lot that's already under agreement, that's going.
Can you explain a little bit more about the partnerships? We like on Friday, we wanna really understand that the town did buy, like, the use, you know, the purpose of it was to be, is the church own the partnership, right? Like whatever the chips are that are like, so is this being designed for the good, what is the partnership or what is it designed to go to the church or?
Yeah, we have discussed this in public space before. The church likes use of that parking lot during certain specific times. I was negotiating in the contract that we have, the union that we have with them, um, where it's not, I don't believe it is for public use during those times.
Mike, correct. During, it's during Sundays during the church services and as well as funerals, there are dedicated parking spaces for the church there.
It's not another of the spots on public, there's a spot designated strictly for dirt, park, well, to church that you members of that congregation were asked that that obligation.
And, and much like any easily, like, you know, basically, you know, my authority, but by the way, they do a, a, a pretty, I, I have to say, I wanna give credit to our new liaison, uh, Jose, you did a fantastic job. But, um, yeah, they have an ancient on my top and, um, I don't even know how many years it is, but it's probably similar to this. It goes for, you know, amount of time that they have access, they don't come and hold it on my property. And I don't know what our husband says to the church, how many years it is, but it's.
I don't have, I don't have to tell you right now, however, like, if you like the property, certainly, so maybe you don't know, request and, and now simply process it, so I can say to your listeners. So we want maybe to be in public areas, well, no.
We worked, we worked with Reverend Smith back and forth. There were so many different like iterations of the design. At one point, they were connected with the PD and at one point, the one way was changed, but ultimately it was decision of the church and they had to go up their kind of chain of command with, with where it landed. But I think meeting with chief and I think sitting down and going through the safety concerns and making sure all those are addressed, that absolutely.
Having the wrong answer for a moment discussion, it sounds like your concern is that the one way, um, actually onto the, maybe.
Exit, and, and for Maple, exit Fish.
And did that have to be did, for them to change that relative to who owns it, like, you know, we have to, we change them in your house, go to get permits, and what was the safety protocol that had to happen for them to sort of change it? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna defer. Again, I'm not trying to be deflective. It's gonna be a conversation for the chief of police who works with the entire design team, right? I mean.
It's parking lot, like, we didn't just, it's not like me or Drew sketching on a, hey, the people are designing this, following.
DOT standards.
There with safety concerns all involved. Cause they follow the process when they do this. I, you know, and I'm not saying it to get me, but what I'm saying is like, they already did consider these things when they put the plan together.
We even took it as far as like working at the fire marshal to make sure that like turning radiuses in both parking lots sufficed in case there was, God forbid, an emergency.
That's nice. You know?
I, I, I would put emails and the concern, you know, your concerns to, um, the borough district, Chris York. He can, he can, uh, help, uh, you know, work with the police department to see what their thoughts are. If you have any suggestions, I have a version put in there also. Um, yeah, if anything, if you do this, we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that's, I'm a great decision, though. We're all busy lives, we can't always check your minutes, so that's always what I spoke and did. I gotta say, it's just a significant change of use. That parking lot was around the parking lot, maybe on Sundays, lots of motivation. Now we're talking about a big parking lot, this way. And general, so that's a very significantly impacted made it. And, uh, again, I, I remember trying to give all opinions from project, I could have the wrong one. Well, very, it's gonna be very, very expensive. But there's never any discussion, I think, with the church, this is the, the police department, including any block of buildings, Rex Center, that's great. This is dramatically different. It is, I just think we should think about a communication plan, special even radius to be effective directly. Yeah, lighting there all night, and then, fast right to the van, people using that parking lot, you know, what happens? It's just like, I mean, parking my cars, you don't hold the park, right? It, it will just reach. So I do think we had an opportunity there, particularly a little more, especially with the homes like, like where she is and the homes right around Maple, that are affected. And I just, it's a little disappointing, this danger makes dramatic, it's change, dramatic. And it's not like, it wasn't public parking lot damage, it's a failure. This was a private parking lot, solely used. And now, I'm talking about the holy, which brings to action. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, uh, are there hours in that parking lot or?
Uh, well, just thinking, you know, there are hours for all parts to vary, so most time go down, park the poles.
Correct.
It's a new time in that box, but it's small.
Is this lot considered part of the park?
I am hoping you should know, it might be all.
It is.
I believe so, yes. There's a specific ordinance.
Um, what about lighting? I think he does make a good point on the lighting. Is the lighting on all night?
The lighting, the lighting is set up.
It's that, yeah, correct. Not in the parking lot, it can't be. We went through, if, so to resurrect the conversation, we specifically addressed this and the governing body gave guidance on the specific light to use as well as the lumen count to ensure that the bleed over didn't go beyond the parking lot. So when you look at the PD community center and the Fisk Chapel parking lot, there's a specific photosensitive diagram that shows how far the light goes. And we specifically picked ones that have specific covers, they're on specific, it's like an ISO timer, I can't remember the name off the top of my head. But that was one of the forefront, um, in the, in that conversation.
Uh, we're trying to be far off, close, when I said, they're not, not, yeah, so, so. Would, would it be reasonable? I think we'll have a continuous conversation that half an hour after the park closes, we could have a timer that shut, that shut the lights off?
For the lights, definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, there.
Or the parking lot.
Well, we, we, we have, so as a public, again, there's no probably John Rillen, uh, because, you know, that's that whole place, we sit there, uh, we really incorporate that, uh, how we're going to body, not make a formation, uh, uh, that, and also all body church, probably not a very strict, their parking, so if they had a, in the fence, uh, that extended past, well, our parking out, our parking gate, um, you would not be able to set those out, like that, so.
Go back for the name.
That is coming a little bit.
We might be able to look at something in this park, just like. And like, I might, I might, I might say that a high ten or a parking permit to show people that are, you know, you're allowed to, maybe you want to try to visit this, or if it's just, you know, go work for the mill, you know, traffic. So that can be something that we want out of the church.
Yeah, I, I think we gotta be careful about, for one, the church.
I see that.
Yeah, I mean, if you put signage in there, you have to make, um, you, you should have to make consideration for, if you said, if there's a, if a.
Have the lights been purchased?
Yeah. The light, specific lights that were purchased as part of the bid, yeah. I mean, the design was done and awarded and I believe they've already started with the process.
Anything else for the borough?
I have something.
I have something.
We had, uh, bad storm about a week, so we noticed, uh, a hundred and twenty-two hours. And on the record, you're black, and there, um, working unbelievable hours, this time, and getting all the best as possible. They can't, what, forty-five minutes, two or three days later, no one was more frustrated than him. Uh, the feeling of the bottom here, I'm speaking to Bryson, and she's keeping out. So it's on record, like, that, that, uh, there's a lot, I'm gonna be doing things to follow this out.
Uh, but there are long, the same lines, and maybe this happened already, but it, and why is it because of these permanent, you can go down here with Chris, um, some mayor, um, for good response. This, you know, some amazing farm actually got it on video, so we've seen it, um, he really tends a lot of damage. I was thinking, but, uh, it, I have a really good thing to tell everybody, so. Uh, but I, I, you know, the, I saw the presidio commission over the last few meetings, and then there was a little light vacation, um, provided some advisory comment for the governing body on the transom that was removed from the PD, as a reminder to everyone, and I saw the um, African-American school from where that went, and it was very carefully surgically done, and it's actually stored currently in this, this building, it's safe evening until I can find this term home. And the, I believe, so it's just our position, mission, they talked about this over a couple of meetings, I wanted to convey um, a position that the council consider placing the transom in a rightful place. They looked at three locations. The school potentially, the vice president hall here, really the community center. The consensus was that the community center seems to be the best place because of its relevance to the historic nature of the site. Beyond that, there, they, there's a lot to figure out, that it would be where we replace, how we replace, where we could give back, like, if I'm pulling into it, so we could shed pieces of glass. Um, it's all in a memorandum, but I, it's my motion for this, is I'd bring that to your attention, and I think probably we should make sure that you have the letter in a hand mail, or certainly. So, for further discussion, hold this up, and if you want to.
Um, so, yeah, I know Brian is saying that I feel obligated to say it was the challenge, it's certainly too harsh. Um, but. Um, but the one story I will say is, um, almost immediately. Obviously, we got a really, uh, bad situation, at the corner of the department, and, um. I almo- almost immediately went to the site that night to, um, make sure that. You know, everyone was safe, and when I got there, the amount of, um, emergency personnel were operating. It was overwhelming, the response, um, was, was just amazing, uh, it's great for me to see is in there. So, invigorating in some ways, and see the way that our emergency personnel ran, uh, to help. It's like that Mr. Roger story that goes here, but, um, then I made my way to another home. That had a tree fallen on it as well, and our DPW was. You know, cutting up the tree, taking it off the house. Nick Fortune, people, uh, comes right into work with his crew. Um, and it was right around there, that, you know, I mean, we had the best staff ever. Um, and I'm just very appreciative of everyone's efforts, not only this one, but every day. Maybe you guys are all amazing, and I'm really proud to be in there this weekend, so. Um, Allison.
Just one quick thing, um, couple of governing body meetings ago, um, the governing body approved a couple hours for Steve Souza. To do the assessment of McCarter Pond and where Wetlands is. Um, it's out of the press, came in a little while ago, so I'll have Chris forward it out there, but in the G B's, so you guys can see. What his assessment is, so it helps round any future session.
After I just sort of brought the analysis, just to then.
Um, just to qualify, just rough analysis, right? Souza has been a borough professional for a long time, so it was his professional opinion. I'm, I'm with you on going to the B E P, but I don't wanna misconstrue that Steve Souza's opinion, who's guided us the last five years, right? Doesn't come with weight, cause it's informed a couple of things that we've done, so.
You know, just to pet my year ever, or even, oh, I came here a year ago, this, things that stay left, but no. And now you're right by it, it's appreciation, things that I've created now, it's upon it, so. Uh, but Doctor Souza wasn't bothering that, not gonna ask.
I wanna be clear, my request for that next step is, is not have anything to do with the characterization of his professional services, I agree very good, yeah. That's just procedure.
And it's been a good year, Chris, hasn't it? We're, we're happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Allison, anyone else? Home on? Okay, so.